Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Program of Personnel event for this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands. One issue. We got in Libertyville, Libertyville.
All right. And committee meeting, so we have no roll call. We're going to go on to invitation for public comment. Do we have anybody that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we are going to move on to item three for discussion, Annual Sectioning and Staffing Process Overview.
Thank you. So we wanted to provide just another overview as we approach our March PNP meeting. So March is when we bring sectioning and staffing information to the board. Usually we provide an overview at that time. I'd like to start with an overview now, review it again in March, and so that we are kind of know what we're getting into. So November, course modifications for the 25-26 school year. Next year were approved at the board meeting by our Board of Education. From there, in December, we, the district leadership team, looks at any requests or updates related to interventions, programs, current models, so looking at additional positions. This year, with the work that was done for this school year with our academic intervention team, that team started meeting in early January, and an update will be presented at our February board meeting in anticipation of our March sectioning. Also during December, Curriculum Guide is updated, published. You guys, the board also received an overview of the School Links Curriculum Guide at the December 9th meeting. That was with Ben Rodriguez. So that information used for our sectioning. Then course selection begins in January through February at all of our different grades. A little bit different time. We, both schools conducted eighth grade orientations. District administrators attended those, well-attended, and you can see that our incoming ninth graders were excited to become future Wildcats and Cougars. Based off of feedback that we received last year, we did make some adjustments to the process, just with our websites, some of the guidance provided to families to make it clear. And then our communications were reviewed and streamlined for easier access and comprehension. So that was feedback that we received from parents, from the board, and the community. We felt that with Jenny Gutch and Andy Young, our Assistant Principals for Student Services, that overall, the communication was smoother this year. Then, coming up into February, we're in February already now, Building Administration Department Chair will meet. They'll review the class sectioning using our core selections, the optimum class sizes that are outlined in our Teacher Union Collective Bargaining Agreement in Appendix F. District section meetings will be held with District and Building Administration. You know, following those meetings, Building Leadership Teams will review sectioning and staffing. District Administrator and our Teacher Union leaderships will review the sectioning and staffing. That's outlined in our memorandum of agreement that we signed going into this school year. And then following those, we will communicate with staff members that are affected with the sectioning and staffing. And then we will bring all of that information to our board meeting, the PNP committee meeting on March 10th. And then following that, I know it's a quick turnaround because of spring break, the schedule, but we do need to take any employment action at the March 17th board meeting. State law says that we need to take employment action by April 15th. And so the way, you know, the meetings are, we need to really take them March 17th. The other reason is that we also want to start any openings that we have, we need to get those openings advertised, job postings, so that we can make sure that we hire teachers for next year. So that's a quick overview. Any question? I'll go over it again in March, just as we bring the information to you, but if there's any questions.
I had none. So we can move on to employment of employees.
This is just our regular employment of employees for this month, and I'll go to the consent agenda.
Okay. Educational tour requests. One sounds amazing. I mean, they both sound fun, but...
Yes. And there, I, so there are two to add to that. And there was a question from a board member regarding specifically the trip, the French trip to Senegal, that being about the process of which fundraising would be available. So we have a, back in the fall, if you recall, the board asked us as an administrative team to really look at our ed tour policies and practices to make sure that we are creating ed tours that are available to as many students as possible, and that price does not become the reason that a student would not be able to attend. So we do have a committee that has been formed. That committee will start meeting in March, and that committee is going to be looking at our ed tour process from soup to nuts, from a logistics standpoint of all of the things that we need to do to organize our ed tours, all the paperwork, all the legal aspects of that, as well as to fundraising and trip affordability. I met with a staff member recently who's on that committee, and that staff member said, you know, "We want to really take a look at, not only are ed tours available to students, but are they accessible?" Because just because they're available doesn't mean they're accessible to everyone. And so we do anticipate in the future having a much clearer guidelines for the board and for families regarding student fundraising opportunities and the expectations from the district in terms of how much funding a student would be able to raise in order to go on a trip. We don't have new guidance yet, but I have been in touch with the teachers who are proposing this trip, talking to them about our administration and our boards kind of focus on that, asking them to think through what fundraising they would be able to do for this trip. There is some existing fundraisers in place, and there may be some, they believe there's also some scholarship money available in French club that could be used to support students who need scholarship for this program, and they're willing to consider other fundraising efforts as well. I don't think we'd be able to reach 100% of the cost for this trip, but the goal was for us to create considerable fundraising efforts that a student who participated would be able to raise close to 50% of the cost for the trip. So that's where we're at right now with that one. There was another question about why Senegal. The goal of the French program is, one year when they travel, they would go to France or they would go to French Cana- French Canada.
Quebec.
Quebec, yes. I was going to say, French Canadian? That's a person, not a place. So, yes. And then they would alter that with a trip to another part of the French-speaking world. And so they have discovered Senegal because at the recent French conference, there were many high school teachers who were talking about bringing students there and having remarkable experiences. It is very safe to travel there. It is very affordable beyond the flight to travel there, and the amount of experiences students have there, it's very different than traveling to a major city and experiencing French. It's traveling to part of the world that a lot of our students are unfamiliar with. It reaches our global attribute in daring, and it gives students a sense that not all of the French-speaking world is white and European. So the teachers were excited about that. They don't see this as sort of an annual trip or kind of a regular trip. They would be rotating to other parts of the French-speaking world, but they felt the cost was commensurate with other places they might travel beyond Canada for that trip. So that was sort of the reason that they were looking at that. Senegal right now is one of the safest, it's on the State Department's very safe-to-travel list. There would be, for students to go, the only thing would be yellow fever. They would have to get a shot for that, but there would not be malaria tablets required or needed. And the travel company has done many trips there with high school students, and all dietary needs and things would be taken care of well in advance. And there would be a, there would be travel guides with our group the entire time to make sure that all of the restaurants and places that we're eating at were aware of those dietary restrictions.
Thank you for explaining all of that. When I saw that initially, I too, sort of, "Senegal? Oh, okay." I didn't even realize it was a French-speaking country, let alone that that would be a place to visit, but that makes sense. It just wasn't clear in what the documentation that was there, but it sounds, thanks for the explanation.
I had many of those same questions, and the teachers have been phenomenal. We do have a list of high schools that have traveled there recently, and we, the teachers are willing to contact teachers there to make sure that, you know, all of what they believe would be a great trip would be in place, and any types of just notes from teachers who have traveled there recently to pass on to us.
I think the parents of anyone considering going to that, that would be helpful information for them as well.
Tom, I had a question. I noticed on the form that was submitted, it doesn't indicate how many chaperones would be going. So for 20 students, how many chaperones would they be wanting?
Right. So right now, they're anticipating three chaperones, and if the numbers of students went up, they would add more. There, you know, the 1 to 10 ratio is in place there, so there's two of our French teachers. Christophe Guillard would also accompany them on the trip right now.
And I also, when I saw Senegal, I was excited and, you know, cautious at the same time. And I looked, you know, every bordering country does have a travel advisory, so if that travel advisory were to change from the State Department, would the insurance protect whatever funds were already submitted in case the, you know, it wasn't safe to travel any further a year out?
Yes. That was a very important discussion, not just with this trip, but with all our ed tours. There must be a cancel-for-any-reason policy that is in place, that is in place for this trip, and would be the, I reviewed the policy, and it would be allowing us to cancel up to 48 hours in advance of the trip travel.
Tom, is there a minimum threshold for how many students have to sign up in order to run this trip?
Yes. If I'm remembering correctly, and I'll verify this, I believe it was 15 was what their minimum number was.
So if for whatever reason, the interest is not there, there'd be, would an alternative be provided, like going to Quebec instead, or would this spring break opportunity just not materialize?
Yeah. We didn't discuss that. They have their regular trips to Canada and to Paris. I don't know if they would want to substitute something if this trip didn't run. Their goal was to begin discussing this with students towards the end of this year in May, and then next year, when the start of the school year, all the new students who were in French classes would be made aware of this trip, they would be talking about it at something like Open House with Parents as an opportunity, and they would be able then to know kind of in early October if the trip was going to run or not. But we didn't talk about them creating a substitute trip. That's a question I can ask them.
Yeah. I'd be curious to see how the timing would work if there was not enough interest to run this trip. And if there are any other questions about this trip, I wanted to circle back to what you started with, so I'll hold off in case somebody has any other questions about the Senegal trip.
My only question was health insurance. I'm not familiar with what kind of providers they have there, so what kind of protections do students have in terms of health insurance? Like, if they go anywhere in the EU or Canada, it's not a concern, but it's just because I don't know what's available.
Yeah. I can't speak to that, but I can double-check on that.
I did see on the State Department website that they recommend, like, whatever the emergency rescue insurance is, so might check into that. Go ahead.
I just wanted to express my appreciation. I think the board has, over the years, demonstrated a commitment to equity, and certainly educational opportunities that go above and beyond is something that we always want to continue to offer. But we also want to be sure that they are not restrictive and leave out students who might not have the financial means to participate. So thank you for convening that committee and reflecting the board's and the district's commitment to equity.
Yeah. And Larry Varn and Ben Rodriguez are chairing that committee. They've already been in touch. We've identified two or three schools, one locally Lydon High School, and one that we, that they met with in Georgia, where they do ed tours, and they have developed ways where all students are able to attend one trip during their high school career if they want to. So we've set up, in addition to this committee, we've set up some online meetings with representatives from those schools to learn about how they do that and ways that they work to help make these trips affordable and accessible to all students. So that'll be part of our ongoing work, not only as the committee does its work, but as we, as a Department of Teaching and Learning, are looking for ideas beyond our own districts.
Thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any other comments, we'll move on.
I have one other update for the board regarding ed tours. This last board meeting, you approved Brendan Nelson taking students to Springfield. I didn't get a chance at that meeting to tell you how cool of an experience that is. That is a very different type of ed tour. We have students on the Libertyville Connect Council, which is a joint council with the Libertyville government, the police department, health organizations in Libertyville. Our students have been invited by State Rep. Laura Favor Diaz to speak to actual House committees on student health and wellness in Illinois, and they're actually consulting on the bill. So they will be going down there. You approved it for March 12th, but the committee changed the date to March 5th. So everything is the same, but I did want to inform the board that that date would change to March 5th. I'm assuming you're comfortable with that. We're comfortable with that. And I just also wanted to highlight that this is a really remarkable thing. Our Libertyville students are not only consulting on this bill, which is focusing on youth mental health, they're also speaking on a bill regarding start times for schools across the state, and the idea of high schools starting later because of teen mental health. And Libertyville is recognized as a school that made adjustments to our schedule specifically for mental health, for our youth, and their ability to maintain proper sleep habits. So it's really a bright, shining kind of star for Libertyville High School and our students to be able to speak and represent not just our school, but our community at the state level. The group of students would like to come and present to the board later this spring. So in, I don't know if it'll be March or April, we'll make it available for them to come and just give you a five-minute update of what they spoke on and how their advocacy is potentially changing things across the state.
That is an amazing opportunity, and I look forward to the students presenting. Would you also be sure that Representative Favor Diaz is invited to whatever meeting it is? I don't know if she'll be in Springfield, or her schedule will allow her to attend, but an appreciation for her, including the students, it would be nice just to let her know that we would love to host her. She lives close by, so if we could do that, thank you.
I will get that message, that invitation.
Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on. Item D, EdX February Institute Day. I'm very interested in this.
Yeah. This is still me, so just wanted to, you, you know, provided you the, kind of the agenda for the day. I just wanted to highlight for the board and for those watching at home, EdX is our educational exposition, and this is really something that is, we're very, very proud of in District 128. There are times in our district where we seek external people to come and talk to us about trends in education and to help us develop new skills, but this is a time in our district when we learn from our talented staff. And not just our teachers, our administrators participate, and our ESP members participate. And we have ESP members who create workshops to present to our staff. We have teachers who create workshops to present to our staff. This year, we have over 50 workshops that have been designed by our own people to be given and shared with our staff. The topics range from belief and belonging to equity and inclusion, health and well-being, exploring multiple paths and dual credit, and differentiation to support all students achieving high academic standards. We also have some technology sessions on AI and on ed tech, as well as some sessions on developing our skills with spreadsheets, developing our skills with our new technology like in Power School and in Skyward. Members of Brian's staff, members of Dan's staff are presenting. So it is really a team effort, and it is a full day of learning and growth for every staff member, all of our professionals in D128. Our instructional coaches and the Department of Teaching and Learning help organize this, and we are very proud of it, and we think we get tremendous return on the day because our staff really learn a lot of great skills that they go and begin to implement the next week with students.
Outstanding. I would love to come see that. I can't, but I would love to be there.
You're invited anytime, Dan.
Thank you. All right. Item four, future agenda items. They are listed. Is there anything else that anybody would like to see placed on a future agenda? I am going to adjourn the PNP meeting and turn it over to Dr. Batson for FNF.
Thank you. We'll move right on with the Facilities and Finance. Call to order. It's about, what, 5:58 right now? Start out with invitation for public comment for this meeting. Anybody? Item A, audited financial reports. Where's Dan?
Thanks. I'm going to go up on the screen, too. We have Betsy Allen, who's our partner at, with Miller Cooper, who's going to be here. Let me just get the right thing up there. One second. Let me get this up here.
Welcome, Betsy.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see everyone.
Ooh. That text's getting smaller. Okay.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I did just put a short presentation together just to sort of give you a quick overview of deliverables and stuff that we did issue to the district, and just a few items that are within those financial statements. If you have any questions as I'm going, please feel free to ask or be happy to answer anything at the end of the presentation. First, I thought it would be good just to start off why the school district even has an audit done each year, and the code does require that all districts within the state of Illinois have an audit performed by an independent accounting firm annually. You know, our main objective of the audit is being for the auditor to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. You know, we perform our audit procedures, and as part of the services, which allows us to provide an opinion on the financial statements. We also can issue an internal control communication, providing recommendations or possible opportunities for improvement within the district if that is necessary to issue. And lastly, the standards do require us to, that we communicate certain items to the board, and we will look at these items that need to be communicated to the board in a later slide. So the final documents that we do provide is our annual comprehensive financial report. We, as the bound, get financial statements. We also issue ISB state form, which is required to be done on the regulatory basis and filed with the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education also requires that all districts perform their audit in accordance with government auditing standards, so we issue our opinion on that. Again, we have our required communication to the board letter that we'll discuss. We issue an in relation to opinion on the consolidated year-end financial report. And then we also issue our single audit package. A district did expend over $750,000 in federal awards, so a single audit was performed. And I just noticed this afternoon that I, again, listed the consolidated year-end financial report, so apologize for that. So each year within the AFR, there's a calculation done with ISB and a financial profile score is calculated. ISB was required a number of years back to come up with a mechanism to be able to track districts that might be having financial difficulty, and this is the calculation that they use. Something to really remember with this is it can be a very volatile calculation, depending on the basis of accounting you're looking at, how you recognize, defer your property taxes, which a district did change last year, two years ago. Was that last year? Two years ago? So this slide is displaying the financial profile score for school District 128 for this year, which was a 4.0, which is the highest level of the categories. In both years, they've been in the recognition status. Each year, too, there are, we call them the GASB statements. GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This year, there were two statements that were effective, but neither of them had any significant effects on the financial statements. It was a sort of a nice year that we had a year off from GASB statements. And then the annual comprehensive financial report, again, that's the GAAP-bound financial statements that they've, I think Dan said is attached to the information you have for tonight. Again, this, they call it the ACFER, is divided into three sections. The introductory section, the financial section, which displays most of the financial statements as well as our report, and the statistical section. Again, in the introductory section, these are the items that are listed within the introductory section. Two of the items I do want to point out, there's a certificate excellence in financial reporting from the ASBO International, as well as GFOA, which is Government Finance Officers Association. The district each year submits their ACFER to those organizations for review in order to obtain those awards. So just quickly, looking at a few things within the financial section. First of all, on the first page is our independent auditor's report. As we talked about, our main objective is to express an opinion on the financial statements. Again, this year, we did issue a clean, unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. The next section is the management discussion and analysis, which is written by management. It's a great place to go to get a quick overview instead of reading the hundreds of pages of information. It does have some financial highlights, overview and descriptions of the information in the financial statements that are contained within the report. There's some condensed financial statements, and also a section discussing items that could have a financial impact on the district in the future. The remaining two sections of the report, sorry, I skipped over the main, the main big part of the report, the basic financial statements. That's where you're going to have both your government-wide and fund financial statements within the report, and there's also all the footnotes detailing significant accounting policies, as well as information on the cash, any debt of the district. There's a lot of information and pages on the pension and OPEP. OPEP is the other post-employment benefits within the footnotes of this section. And then the remaining two sections are where you're going to see more multi-year schedules of pensions and OPEP schedules, along with all the budgetary schedules and combining schedules for all the district's funds. The final section of the report is the statistical section, and here you're going to see information, items listed here, the financial trends, revenue and debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and operating information, and the majority of these schedules, which is required by the standards, will be 10 years, 10 years of information. And then lastly, as we talked about in the beginning, we are required to communicate certain items to the Board of Education, and this is just a quick summary. Again, we performed our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards. government auditing standards, and also the uniform guidance is what, what is followed when, uh, performing the single audit. Um, it does also list any future and current GASB pronouncements. Um, like we did discuss that there were no GASB statements effective for this year, but there are some coming up in the future, so we will continue to work with the district on implementing those standards. Um, the, the communication letter also discusses any significant accounting estimates and significant accounting disclosures. Um, it also states we had no difficulties with management completing the audit. Do you want to thank Dan and his entire staff for their, their work during the audit and getting it completed so we could get everything filed? Um, we did not identify any unusual transactions. We did have one past adjustment noted in, in regards to some transportation fuel costs, and Dan said he had, um, discussed that or, or put up... With them, right? Is what he just told me?
Yeah, I added information on...
Okay.
On that.
And then, uh, we did also add one observation and recommendation as we probably, if you've been on the board for a while, this has been in our letter for multiple years, um, just in regards to technology and data risk security. You know, we always talk about how technology is ever-changing, um, and so just to be aware of that, it's not stating that there's anything wrong with what's going on within the district. We just want to make sure everyone's always aware of that. And then when we did, uh, release all the information, Manfred did sign and provide us with a representation letter and all the information, um, that needed to be filed with different agencies has been filed. And then lastly, um, as I talked about in the beginning, it is possible we could have issued a management controlled efficiency letter if we had any observations we needed to put in writing to the board. And, um, this year, we'd had no management letter that we issued for fiscal year '24. So if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments? We'll have the one item to vote on later in the month. Well done, Dan. Thank you, Betsy. That's good news.
Yeah. Thank you, Betsy. And this is, it's a culmination of work of basically every person in our entire system in terms of following the right protocols when we're gonna engage with services, payments, all those processes being followed. Um, so it's, there's a lot of people involved in helping us get to a point like that.
Well, I appreciate your work, Betsy, and I especially appreciate that we can have what I think is a delightfully boring presentation yet again, um, that we received the highest ratings and that there are no discrepancies. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, long-term capital plan. Dan, back to you.
Sorry. Um, yeah, so we, um, we, um, have updated and attached for you our long-term capital plan. Um, we really are targeting over the next five years, uh, is really the target, but if you look at the file, it goes out to 2050, um, really to just kind of help us set placeholders. Uh, and so the idea is try to keep improving and, um, make sure you've got records that are, uh, left for maybe future people better than what you received. And so, um, what we have is the projection for, um, our overall capital needs. The, the, the reality is we won't have enough funds to pay for all of those things. And so, uh, what we will continue to do is as we get to that year, uh, Mark will be reviewing, uh, with a lot of other people to just kind of see what are the things that are urgent. So you might have something scheduled, um, and then depending on the condition of that or the urgency of other things, those will get adjusted each year. Um, and so Mark has done a good job of trying to help us, move us forward with a lot of things. Um, but really, if you looked at the detail, the numbers that are more scary is really about how fast do we replace the HVAC systems? And so, um, what Mark has in there is more aggressive than what we can actually accomplish, and so we'll, we'll just have to pace those out. That's really, I think, the core of what's in that data. That looks like a really, really big number in a couple of years. It's, it's really the HVAC stuff and just kind of spreading that out will be all over the longer term. So that, that is our capital plan. That, that's what that is. Um, you know, I, at a future meeting, um, I'm gonna have some more information for everybody in terms of, um, I think the next evolution of what our plan could look like and also some relatively recent, um, legislative changes that, uh, could get us more access to funding, uh, to fund some things, uh, depending on what it is. And so, um, I don't have more information to share with you right now, but I want to plan to do that at a future meeting. I was hoping to do it for this tonight, but I just wasn't able to get everything ready. But I think March, I could, maybe March, I could probably share that information.
Is that state or federal funding?
Uh, it's state, yeah, but it, well, it's a state law and the funding is not state funding. Um, it's a, so I, so it's a state law that, um, that changed, and I'll be able to provide more information on that. It, it wouldn't be something necessarily that would be, it, it's not like, it's not like a referendum level kind of funding. It's something that just helps a little bit. Um, so I'll, I'll have more information to share in a future meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Moving on, I think Don will like this one, or maybe not, depends on...
Maybe not. Um, just trying to be transparent. So when we have talked before, I want to be clear about what we've said the expectation is and what happened, what didn't happen. What we talked about before was that in January, we think we could have the RFP developed and then get that out. That did not happen. Quite frankly, I got sick for a week and then I lost a whole week and then recovering, I wasn't able to get everything done. Um, so we were not able to get the RFP done for solar for January, but I do think we'll be able to get it done for this month. So the idea is to develop that RFP this month, uh, and then get that issued out and then kind of work on a timeline from there. So that's the update on the RFP.
As long as we keep momentum going.
I believe we have the momentum.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
That's good. Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Um, enrollment projections.
Enrollment, so I just, um, I'd really just have the slides here to help guide. Most of the information is in the report, so every year we, um, update our enrollment in terms of what actually happened in enrollment and where the projections are heading. Uh, and so the, the forecast is a little bit different than it has been in the last couple of years. We've been in a period of declining enrollment, uh, and it looks like we'll be in that a little bit, but it seems like it might actually, uh, taper down a little bit over the next few years. So if you look, this is a chart, yep, oh, let me share the screen. Sorry, everyone at home. I gotta find my mouse. Give me one second. Okay. Um, so this is a screen that shows, there's, there's a lot of interesting charts here. Please first note the Y-axis. It is not zero at the bottom. Uh, it kind of auto-adjusts based on the numbers that are there. So just please note the scale. This data goes back to 1617, which is really when I started tracking this data. And, um, there is CASADA. So CASADA is a demographer that we've used, uh, for a long time. Um, and we had a report, um, several years ago and they had, uh, CASADA gives you three projections. A is like the lowest expected, B is the most likely, and C would be the highest projected. Then in addition to that, we charted the actual enrollment that actually happened, so that's the green line. Um, so you can kind of see where that trends. And then in 2021, we, we did a new projection with CASADA. So that's why you see all those numbers come together because that was the reset of the new study. And you can see those projections go out to 2031. Unfortunately, those projections were showing, uh, decline, and so we have experienced decline enrollment, uh, over the last few years. But what it looks like is, so next year, we would anticipate another small decline, but it's a much smaller decline than what we would have experienced the last couple of years, but it would be down a few students. But it seems, um, it seems over the next five years, uh, it might be somewhat relatively flat, still down a little bit, but not like what it has been. So that's based on the information, um, that's coming from our elementary districts. You've seen some of them that have experienced significant enrollment declines. They're recovering a bit, and so those students eventually, uh, come to us. So that's a big overview picture of overall enrollment for the entire district.
Wow. Uh, the green line, uh, that's who's in the pipeline right now. Like, we know those kids are in seats in the grade school.
The green line is district, our own internal calculations for enrollment, based on actual enrollment. So if it's this year, which is, call it 2425, those are actual enrollments, then everything going forward on the green line is projections based on, uh, survival ratios and calculations based on what our feeder districts are reporting. And then, um, so looking at each school, so Vernon Hills has been hit, um, more significantly, uh, with the enrollment changes, but it does look like next year, they'll actually be up a little bit, would be in the projection by a few students. Uh, and then somewhat relatively flattening out is the idea of what those, what that data is showing. Libertyville, uh, again, has been a, a period of decline over several years, uh, broadly, and is gonna look like it's declining a bit over the next few years, eventually recovering, but that still looks like that's what it's gonna be like for that school. Again, focus on the Y-axis, it's not zero. Um, so it just kind of focuses, and so you can get a distinction between the lines. Um, there are three areas of special populations in our district that have had notable changes that we continue to monitor. Um, then those populations have a direct impact on our staffing, our budgeting and things like that. One is EL, and so we have, we have noted that our EL population has been increasing. Uh, so you can see the history of our EL students and, um, that that has increased, uh, substantially as a percentage of our population over the last five years. And the projections would be, again, these, these things are really hard to project, but I know how many EL students are in our feeders, and so we try to use a similar methodology to predict what they'll be when they're here, but it's a smaller population, so the data is a little bit more questionable. So I, this is, should really just be used, I think, to show just a general trend. This is not saying in two years, we're gonna be at 10% or three years, we're gonna be at 10%. It just, that's where the trend is heading. But I think one year in advance is pretty reliable. Yes?
Because I don't know how EL is defined. Um, if you have EL students that are currently in elementary or middle school, would they still be EL by the time they come to high school or no longer?
Some yes, some no. So EL is an official designation from the state, and it is, uh, every year, we have to give an access test. We're actually doing it right now. Um, and students who, um, score above, I believe it's a 4.8, um, exit our program, but they still need to be monitored for a year. And then, so there are some students in the elementary, middle schools who might still be EL when they come to us, and then there might others that have exited out and are being monitored, and there would still be others who have exited out and are no longer, um, being monitored.
And we, I use the historical trend of, I know how many were in there, let's say two years ago, and how many actually ended up, um, in our district. And so we try to use that trend analysis to project a bit, but again, this is like one year in the future is the only thing we can get a, a sense on. The, the trend is up in this area. Uh, so that's a percentage of our students. Um, low income, or another term we use internally, fee waiver, uh, has been on the rise as well across the district. And so, again, we show that has been increasing and it shows like it will continue to increase, increases the overall trend for that. Uh, and the third area is our students with special needs, um, that have IEPs in our system. And so that one also has been showing, uh, bit growth. Next year, you know, might be really close to flat there in terms of our percentage of our population, um, but you can see the, where the trend line would be headed on that. So that's, uh, those are the special populations, um, all of which, uh, require more resources, and they have been growing in the senses, they're, look like they'll be continuing to grow. Um, one thing that, uh, we also do is kind of project for the elementaries as well to kind of see where they're at. One thing that is interesting is live births because there is, uh, there's a real connection to how many students, how many children are born in Lake County, to how many students end up in our schools five years later and then, you know, 14 years later when they're freshmen. And Lake County has been on the decline for several years. Um, 2022 is the most recent data we have. 2021, they actually increased, which was the first increase in well over a decade, uh, but 2022 went down a little bit as well. So that's something that we watch. That's one of the best predictors we have of kindergarten enrollment, and whatever happens in kindergarten, that'll impact what freshmen we have, you know, in the 2030s, for example. Um, so that's information that I think is pretty helpful. So that's the, just an overall summary. We've got the report in there that's got a lot more information for you, but that's just a brief overview of just where we're at in terms of enrollment.
Thank you. Thank you. It's amazing to me, looking at CASADA numbers and projections over the years, and this goes back, I can recall CASADA surveys back in the 90s, in the mid 90s, and how close the B range really hits the target with what actually happened. So they're, they're pretty, I won't say they're accurate, but it's a pretty good predictor of, of what's to come.
Yeah, in my experience, they're more likely to be accurate if you give them accurate data.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if, as long as you've got the right data you're giving them and the consistent data across the whole system, you're more likely to get more accurate data, which I think that's, you're seeing a result of that, um, as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Is it a heavy lift to provide them with data or do they do a lot of the data mining themselves?
Um, they don't have access to some of the data. The data they require isn't a lot, but if you don't give them the right data that they're asking for, uh, they'll produce results that are not gonna be really what you're looking for. So, um, for example, when you say enrollment, most of the things that you see public facing are called home enrollment, and that includes both students that are served in our buildings and students that are served, um, they live in our district, but they're served at other facilities. Could be other public schools or other private schools or things like that. That's what home enrollment is. A lot of the data that I use when projecting internal, especially for the school, because it, they, they'll project based on the actual high schools. We need to know how many students are actually gonna be intending Libertyville High School. We also want to know how many students we're gonna be responsible for. That's our overall population, but it's really important for us to help to know what's gonna happen at Libertyville, what's gonna happen at Vernon Hills, and that's serving school enrollment. And so if you don't give them those right data, you might be off 50 or 50, 60 kids maybe, but that can have a compounding effect to your data. And so it's really, it was really valuable that the feeder districts partnered really well, and we made sure that we had the exact, accurate data, the best data we could give them. Uh, and then they also get access to other data that we, we wouldn't in terms of more demographics, in terms of the, the broader what's happening. So for example, I remember Vernon Hills, like the enrollment was declining. We were shooting up enrollment. Why did it turn? And the short answer that we got was it's because older people are not turning over and having younger people come in. That's not happening right now. He couldn't tell us why it's not happening exactly. There's, you can guess why, I mean, you can have guesses in terms of why, but he said it's not happening right now, but it will happen. It just, it doesn't seem to be happening right now. So don't sell off a building, like it's gonna happen eventually, it's just a matter of when. But the projections we're showing doesn't sing, doesn't seem like it's gonna happen in the next five or 10 years. So that's an example of data that they would have that we, we would not necessarily have the expertise into that.
Anything else? Okay, thank you for that. Uh, LHS cafeteria project update, and thank you for the photos.
Excuse me. Um, yeah, we have a report in there, uh, in terms of budget, in terms of what we spent, 2.3 million so far for the project. And then there's also a more fancy, uh, schedule that is hard for me to read, uh, but I brought Mark here if he can talk through kind of overall what's happening with the schedule, because that's a pretty big, important, um, really, really critical part of this project in terms of, uh, the project schedule. And there's some pictures as well that you can see, but Mark, would you want to talk through the project?
Sure, it'd be my pleasure. So our goal was to open up in phase one was open up the kitchen, back of kitchen. Uh, right now, we, we were behind, we're tracking back on schedule, um, uh, for, for that to take place. Um, we worked with, uh, the cafeteria staff, um, our vendor, as well as, uh, Ray Albion, our principal, you know, on a menu and everything and a setup to make sure we have electric available and everything for the last eight weeks of school. Um, so we're still on track to, to meet that goal. As far as the overall project, uh, as we've, uh, Gilbane has vetted all the, our vendors and contractors, you know, and then worked on timelines, we've realized, you know, we need to make up time. So, you know, we started, uh, working on that process. For instance, in the... So, you know, we started working on that process, for instance, in the courtyard. We're gonna actually start doing a second shift and hauling materials out, you know, before spring break, take them down the library hallway, and take them out of the building at night, and then we have to pick them up again because of the noise at night. But we're trying to, you know, to make sure we stay on track for, you know, the opening of school. So the goal is still to make sure it happens, but we wanted, anything that we can do ahead of time is what we're working on. We're, we started other investigations, let's open up some walls above the ceilings, make sure steel's in the correct place, so let's make sure, you know, see if we can find anything, you know, any things that are, are hidden, and, you know, so we can make adjustments early on in the game. Our equipment's been ordered, we have a lot of things in stock, ready to come, the kitchen equipment, things like that. So things are very promising right now. We're gonna have some hiccups, we know that, but it's, you know, just things we'll, we'll overcome as we go along, and so, you know, every month we can do a, a better update and see where we stand. Any questions?
Any chance in April we can take a peek?
Sure. We, I could arrange that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
Anyone else wanna do that?
Yeah, with the future agenda items, add that to it, whether it's March or April or whatever is an appropriate time, we don't want to disrupt anything, but whenever is an appropriate time that we can see something.
But I'm assuming after spring break, a lot will, like, that'll be an accelerated week, because there won't be students around.
Well, yeah, during spring break, that's when we plan to switch over.
Right.
So, you know, back of kitchen, you know, should be ready to operation, you know, when you come back from spring break, so.
Put it out there, I, I'm fine with pictures. I think it's a little premature to start doing tours at this stage personally, but if you want to arrange your own tour.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have a?
I'm figuring, and I think Don's probably figuring we're here, and it's right down the hall, that, you know, if there's things to see, and I don't want to go in there if there's nothing really obvious that we can see, but after the switch over, I think that would be an interesting to see.
Yeah, I want some equipment, more equipment goes in the kitchen hood and things like that, that we can look and see how close we are for next month's meeting, and, and you can see in the pictures the bathroom, that's the staff bathroom in the area, you know, it's, you know, the floor tiles in, tiles on the wall, you know, we're doing pre-finishes ahead of time, things like that, so.
And maybe after FNF, you know, one of these upcoming months, I'll bring my heart out.
Sure, okay. Can arrange that.
Okay. Okay, moving on, bid recommendations, asphalt repairing and LHS concrete work, VHS asphalt repair.
Yeah, this one was a little tricky, so tried to explain it. The, the LHS portion, I think, is straightforward, the trickier part was Vernon Hills, and there's, I think, a really helpful visual that kind of lays out the different zones in there, and so in order to kind of stick within our budget, and, because we, we were talking through like which alternates should we recommend, we feel pretty comfortable with where they're at, that we would have the base bids plus two, three, four, and six for that, that would come at 1,044. With the design cost, 1.1 million is essentially what the cost will be. Alternates five and seven, they're just gonna have to wait for a future time, and those areas aren't as often traveled on as the other areas, they're not quite as in, in as much need of replacement, but they, they do need to get replaced, because they're, they're definitely of age, but it's just gonna have to wait for a future, a future year.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, overall, for summer, we're sitting right at around 4.6 million for total summer project work.
So this will happen, this will come up for vote at the meeting in a couple weeks?
Yes, and we will work to make sure it's clear on what we're approving.
Okay. Moving on, safety netting at the varsity baseball field at LHS.
This is similar, part of our summer capital projects, the netting at LHS Varsity Baseball Field, and depending on some of those spots, that will not stop a baseball, and so we, that, that's been on our list to replace, and so that estimate was 53,000, it's coming in at just under 53,000 for that work.
Questions, comments? Nope, okay. Next on the agenda, future agenda items, we just talked about maybe a optional tour coming up, March, April, whenever's appropriate. Anything else that anyone would like to suggest moving forward? Okay.
Maybe just two things to highlight at the board meeting, I would plan to have a mid-year financial review, that's more of a report about what the fiscal year has been operating like so far, as well as have our updated financial projections. So normally, this would be the meeting that I would have our updated financial projections, but I just wasn't able to get all that ready, but I will have it ready in two weeks, so we'll be able to share that information. Now that I have the financial reports and all the enrollment projections, that's the data that I really need to be able to produce this.
Sounds good.
I have a slightly slow reaction, I should have probably brought this up during PNP, but it would be good to see, since we've got one semester in now, how the students are doing, especially with APA and all the enrollment we've, changes we've made, how did they do at the end of first semester, I think would be a good metric to have, and how effective is the MTS support they're getting?
Okay. Yeah, maybe for a future PNP meeting? All right. Anything else? All right, shall we, we'll adjourn this meeting, and then we're going to have a, a special meeting coming up, should we take five minutes, or?
I'm good to go.
No, we're good to go? Okay. Pull up that meeting.
So did you adjourn?
Yeah, I adjourned the committee, yeah.
Great.
Okay, so Carol, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, so we will call to order the Special Board of Education meeting for February 10th, it is, what, 6:20, 34? Should we do the pledge again?
No.
I think we've already done it.
We've already done it, yeah. So I need a roll call then, please.
Batson.
Here.
Sorry, Jim Batson. Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Cotwell.
Your.
Sunal Kulkarni.
Here.
Okay. Looking over the agenda, we're gonna have the typical invitation for public comments, and then we're gonna move to, go into executive session, have for five ILCS 120 slash 2C1, which is employment of employees, and then five ILCS 120 slash 2C2, which is collective negotiating matters. And then after that, we will come out, there will be no action taken after those meetings, so folks can, can head out, and we will, you know, we'll adjourn after that, so. Invitation for public comment, anyone? Okay, so need a motion to move into closed session.
Carmichael, move to, move into closed session.
Hessel, second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. We will move into closed session in just a moment, we'll give a chance to get things set up here and ready to go.